Okay, welcome everybody. This is the, we'll call into order the city commission meeting for October 3rd. We have a forum and we'll start off. I think the first thing to do is to recognize or to reorder our agenda. We'd like to move new business to right after proclamation. So we would like to move new business, which is item, I believe, item six. Excuse me, item five, we'd like to move it to item two. No, excuse me, I'll get there. Move item five to item one. I need a motion for that to reorder the agenda.
I don't, you don't need a motion?
I'd like a motion to reorder the agenda.
Second.
To move to second, all in favor, reorder the agenda?
Aye.
Oppose team sign? Thank you. First thing on our agenda is invocation.
If you all pray with me. Lord heavenly father, we just thank you so much for this time that we can come together as a commission and as a community. We pray your blessings on our country and our men and women who serve overseas and continue to fight for this country and we pray your blessings on the folks of this community. And we just lift this all up in your son Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Second on our agenda is pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, proclamation. We have today a proclamation for domestic violence awareness month. Is there someone there to speak to the proclamation?
Hello, I'm Darla Carter and I'm the director of the Family Life Center Safe House. The Family Life Center is a shelter for domestic violence and sexual assault for women and children that are in abusive situations. We can hold up to fifteen women and children. The day, the stay is usually thirty days, but it is also based on an individual basis. And so we've had them stay up to overnight for a protection order up to four months. Our fiscal year is July 1st through June 20th and through that fiscal year with the June 20th ending of 2016, we sheltered fifty-two women and twenty-three children. We had three hundred and eighty-five hotline calls, crisis calls, and two hundred, or three hundred and seventy of those were domestic violence and fifteen of those were sexual assault. We've had to turn away ninety victims this past fiscal year due to our shelter being full. The shelter is based in Eldorado, but we, like I said, we service all of Butler County. We've had twenty-one women and children move into permanent housing or a better living situation out of those fifty-two women and twenty-three children. We have a support group that meets every Tuesday and we've had fifty-one participants. Protection orders, protection from abuse, we've had a hundred and fifty-six protection from abuse orders. That's an average of three a week. We've had thirty protection from stalking orders. We have a teen dating violence program that we put in the high schools. It's in the freshman class and in Eldorado, it's in the health class. We've put this, we have this program in Eldorado, Augusta Circle, Flint Hills, Remington and Rose Hill and four hundred and ninety-two students have participated in it. We're seeing women and children stay longer in shelter due to the lack of adequate and affordable housing. The safe house gets very few dollars to help women and children get, be able to move in, to help with rent and utilities. We do partner with the other agencies like Butler Health Initiative and Midcap and they can help with getting them into housing, but there's just the waiting list on the low-income housing, which is Silverwood, Quail Ridge and Augusta Housing Authority. Those waiting lists are six months to a year. And so then if they rent from just an outside person, usually the rent is high and they can't afford it because a lot of these women, you know, their jobs, skills or whatever are McDonald's or waitressing or something like that, so they can't afford it. There's just not enough money to go around to help these women and children get into adequate housing. We, but domestic violence doesn't happen to just low-income people. It can be your daughter, your grandchildren, your sister, your niece. It could be the lady sitting next to you in church, a nurse or a secretary. It can be anybody. You just, you know, you just see more of the low income for the reasons that there are. We get the grant from the city of Eldorado to help with, that grant pays for our support group facilitator and so that helps and then it also pays, helps pay for our crisis hotline. So that grant is very, very crucial to us to do that. I gave you in a packet, Tabitha gave you, all of our services that we have. Like I said, the services are all very crucial in everything that we do and so we appreciate your help. Domestic violence is a learned process. That's why that we continue to educate people and we give the warning signs of unhealthy relationships in the high schools so we can stop this vicious cycle that we have. I thank you for the proclamation, for recognizing domestic violence as a serious crime that it is and that I appreciate also that all of the support that the city gives us to help us with keeping the safe house open. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much for what you do and yeah, unfortunately, an unfortunate circumstance. So I thank you again.
Thank you.
I will read the proclamation. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender and income levels and whereas domestic violence is widespread and claims the lives of three women in our nation every day and whereas out of three Americans fifteen years of age or older have witnessed an incident of domestic violence and whereas children that grow up in a violent home are believed to abuse and neglect at a rate higher than the national average and whereas domestic violence costs the nation's, nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelter, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism and non-productivity and whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime and whereas the safe house in Eldorado has served Eldorado community for twenty-six years and whereas domestic violence awareness month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services and assistance to victims. Now therefore I, Vince Haynes, mayor of the city of Eldorado, Kansas, do hereby proclaim October 2016 as domestic violence awareness month. In the city of Eldorado, Kansas, and urge all citizens to join in this observance by resolving to end domestic violence and by making ourselves aware of the ways in which it affects our community. In witness thereof, I hereby am to set my hand to cause the seal of Eldorado, Kansas to be affixed this third day of October 2016. Tabitha, do you have the proclamation?
It's on top on your sheet.
Oh, there it is, I'm sorry. So I can sign this and hand it, correct?
And there's to be a second copy for us.
Would you come forward? Okay, our reorganized agenda has item five, which is new business, moved to the front of our agenda.
Do we not do personal appearances?
No, we moved it to the first thing, to item one. I want to do new business first for this reason. It's been an interesting day here at city hall, to say the least. We, I met with our city manager Herb Llewellyn today after he has, after he had actually met with staff and Herb has, has informed me that he is taking a sick leave from now until the end of his contract. His sick leave from his position as city manager and although he remains city manager in name, he has designated all the duties and the day-to-date performances of the city to, per policy, to Scott Rickard. All of the decision-making power associated with that position now rests with Scott and that is per, per policy as the next chain in command, so to speak, for the city. Herb has, like I said, is still in, nominally the city manager, but vacated due to his, his sick leave. Scott will serve in that role until the city commission chooses to either maintain him there or seek the services of an interim city manager. That's something the city commission needs to decide to do, something that we can, certainly weren't anticipating on this short notice to do that, but we have that at our availability. I think the next steps really, again, this happened just today. I've had a short conversation with Scott, but really haven't had a chance to say much else to that. Any questions from the commission or comments at this point? We have a couple of things going on also since we're in new business and stay there. I think there are some, there's some, there's some good news to share after this also or right now. I will, we anticipate entering into an agreement with our search consultant we interviewed last week and have named that person. They've agreed to work with us. That's Waters and Associates. So we will immediately start, start the search process and advertising. That process will include community profile and job description and candidate profiling, the type of person that we would like to, to seek. That will have both staff and commission input. We have not, I think we've got a draft schedule, but we don't have anything in, since that just happened Friday of last week also, we don't have anything firmed up, but that, we anticipate that being a hundred and twenty day or so process as we seek a new city manager. Any questions or comments the city commission wants to make on that?
I think we're, I mean, I'm just excited for this new chapter and of course excited to get the wheels turning and the ball rolling with art. We had a lot of good firms that were finalists in that, but I think we will be pleased and the community will be pleased with the folks assisting in that.
One of the things that's part of that is, I think, sure. I think communication's going to be key as we move forward and I don't, I don't really want, I'd like to avoid communication gaps. I think the commission needs to appoint or otherwise authorize one or two of us to be that point person. Point person only for communication, not, not as a gatekeeper for information, but communication. So I would, I would welcome the discussion of the commission on who, who that should be and how we move forward with that.
I think two things. I would like to see a point person or two, of course, I think, if you don't mind, so I mean you would be one. Of course, I'd be happy to help if you need, but I think acknowledging you being the point person between us and the firm with Waters and Company and then also a point person with Scott just until, like you said, until we decide maybe short-term what we're doing and a little bit more permanent level. I think those two things would be appropriate if the others are in agreement.
I'd be fine with that. Okay. Jim, should that be in, or Tabitha either one, Scott, should that be in the, in the terms of a motion or just consensus for that?
I think it probably best, Mr. Mayor, if you did it in the form of a motion, it's a fairly formal appointment, so to speak, and even though you characterize it as being for communication purposes and certainly not as a gatekeeper position, I think it's probably formal enough that it would augur for a motion.
I guess I would add to that, it is in by no way, I think the commission has its boundaries as a policy board. It's by no way this, this decision, if you will, offering any kind of authority other than, other than what this body does. It's not, I would not, absolutely not think that it is to, to be a part of the day-to-day operation. I think that's, Scott is that person and that's where we're at. I want to make it clear that this is not about getting involved with the day-to-day city affairs, but only as a point person primarily for the consultant as we move forward and also I guess whatever means of urgency that might come up in the next few days.
Well, I will be happy to move to appoint Mayor Haynes as the point of contact on behalf of the commission with Waters and Company and as well as the point of contact with Scott Rickard during the interim in this process.
Second.
Okay, so we moved to second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose team sign? Motion carries four to zero. I will abstain.
Scott, I got my question. On the one, the first thing we talked about. Now, state, city staff and city employees, you are, know you are the man of authority and they can't run over to Herb's house and ask Herb anything. You're the one that's going to do all the authority within the city, and Herb's not going to run it from his house?
I think that's the, what was discussed here tonight by the mayor, that day-to-day operations would go through me. Herb Ross made that known as his wish or his suggestion, not his wish, prior to making that announcement. So by now, all the department heads are aware of this. I believe a significant number of city employees have been made aware as well.
And if I may add real quickly? I would just say another thank you to Herb for his service and getting us to this point, but also just say to the community, I have, I couldn't have more confidence in Scott and our senior staff. And so this, you know, business as usual and this will continue to be a smooth transition and we're on to getting on to business with Waters and Company. So I just want to thank staff for kind of helping us along in the next few months. So, good things to come.
Yeah, I think so. We're excited about the next chapter. We're in new business. It's a pretty heavy topic we just finished with, but we have advisory updates. Anybody wish to make those?
I'll start at this end. Airport has an advisory meeting this Thursday that has been canceled for lack of a quorum, so it'll be another two months before we have that. Recreation was last Wednesday and I had to leave early, but I was there long enough to know that fall sports is well underway, soccer as well as football. I understand that if there is anybody out there who still wants to coach, that they could use some assistance there. I believe we have quite a number of our city staff that are actually coaching soccer and football, so anybody out there feels guilty that they're not doing it, give Kevin Wisher to call. Convention and tourism doesn't meet till next month, but we just finished up Oktoberfest and beautiful evening for it, nice crowd, really enjoyed getting out and seeing one particular member of the community in his later housens that he actually purchased in, in Michigan.
You have the reports?
Prairie Trails Advisory met last week and just had an update on the greens and they had a ladies tournament, I believe, last week that was pretty well attended and got some good, good feedback and a lot of compliments on the course. Had some questions about the upcoming cross-country deal that I answered to the best of my ability. I don't know if I got everybody's questions answered, but did the best I could, so that's all I got.
And for Inc., Inc. is on a membership drive right now. That's what they're doing right now. And I wanted to talk about Trick or Treat Down the Street. Empress Bank will still have access. They will build a, they will not barricade the bank off, it will still have drive-through access on Trick or Treat Down the Street.
That's the plan, to allow a right turn on First Avenue and a right turn to the drive-through line.
Thank you.
Tabitha, can you go ahead?
The only I have is economic development conference is coming up on Thursday. Be interested in attending that, that's in Wichita. Main Street, I attended a board meeting there last week and they are working on, on some of their next year's goals. I think the one to report today is for me is REAP. I spent three days, yeah, three days last week in Nashville, no, a week, two weeks ago in Nashville, joining the city of Wichita with their city-to-city tour myself and the mayor of Wellington and the mayor of Derby and a assistant administrator out of Harvey County. We're the only non-city of Wichita residents that were on that tour, which was very, it was very interesting and I felt privileged and honored to be a part of that as Wichita Mayor Longwell continues to talk about regionalism. And I felt it was, it was good to be in on the conversation and see what's happening in the city of Nashville on a regional level. And we see, we see Eldorado and as a player in the regional, regional initiative and Wichita sees that as well through the BREG, which is a blueprint of economic development, as well as REAP, regional economic area partnerships. All of that is, is in an effort to see what we can do as a team rather than individual communities. And it was a great, it was a great trip and it was very informative. So I'd like to thank the commission for allowing me to represent the city in that capacity and thanks to REAP for, for inviting me to be their guest. That was very enlightening. Anything else on new business? That was plenty. All right, let's go to public comment. Anybody from the audience wish to address the commission?
Mayor, I'm sorry, we have one more personal appearance before that public comment.
I'm so sorry. Did I? My apology, please. I got, I jumped the gun a little bit. So we have one more personal appearance, my, my apology.
It's the goodness. It's Mrs. Cross.
Mrs. Cross, I'm sorry.
All of you.
Yes, come up and, and tell us your name and what you're doing and my, again, my apology for making you wait through all of that.
Hey, we don't mind, it was very interesting. Well, my name is CJ Wilson. Me and Chase have known each other a long time, so he knows me as Cross. And then we also have Brent Hanson and Ross Viner. We wanted to come in today and just introduce ourselves. We are Oasis Productions and we will be bringing the Dam Music Festival here to Eldorado Lake in July of 2017. This will be a two-day music festival. We will be having a concert in the evening time, but during the day it'll be more of a beach party, embrace Eldorado, embrace the lake. You can go boating and come in town and then we'll have a concert in the evening time, which is actually down, hence by its name, the Dam Music Festival. So it'll be down by the dam in that Walnut Grove area. So we just wanted to introduce ourselves to the community. We announced today our partnership with iHeartRadio and then also we have already gotten sponsors already involved and we do want to do like a meet and greet with the community. We do want this to be a community event. I mean, I've done these events for twenty years. Ross and Brent do drums across Kansas. This is their twentieth year, which they will be bringing back to Eldorado next summer. So it's a very busy time for us, but at the same time, we want Eldorado to be a part of our event. In the past, I've done events where we've helped parks get equipment for their parks for kids, either doing, you know, giveaways or drawings or raffling, you know, autographed guitars. So we will in a couple of weeks announce like just an opportunity for people to come out and meet us. We want to make sure that this is a great opportunity for all of us. Country Stampede is in Manhattan and their economy gets affected by nine million dollars over that weekend alone when they have that event. So we are not wanting to be a one-time event, we want to be a long-term event so that all of us can benefit from those great things. So we're here this evening, I'm going to leave my business cards here. I do marketing, Brent does tickets and Ross does operations. So if you ever have any questions, there's information on here. We want to make sure we have a good partnership here and we appreciate Chase, you know, bringing this in and saying, hey, this is what you need to do. So we appreciate that and we're here, so we hope that we can, if you guys have anything to add, sorry.
She's our mouthpiece.
Took the marketing girl. So I'll just send this here for you guys and then...
I would just add, you know, I was lucky enough to cut my teeth way, way back in the day with CJ and they do a great job and put on great events, these guys have and she has and together they make a great team. So I think it's, we're in for a big treat in 2017 and of course she left her info here at city hall, but if anyone has interest in getting involved, feel free to contact me. I can give you their information and get you in touch, but I would love to see the community rally behind it and get involved in a big way, so.
Just got permission from Seth to increase the count from ten thousand, twenty thousand people a day, so that's...
The entertainment that we're looking at may need to be increased, so be good for all.
Pretty good entertainment.
It's going to be July 28th and 29th. It'll be a Friday and Saturday and the concert part will happen in the evening and we are looking for larger national acts, which is why we've had to increase those numbers. So...
Which will, to be announced.
To be announced.
Very soon, we have everything, you have to be careful how all those things fall into place, the logistics, so it's going to be awesome.
Garth Brooks would be nice.
We, oh, yeah, so too. I think that would just put us all over the top. I mean...
I said her Facebook message, but you haven't responded. I said her Facebook message, but he hasn't responded.
We'd have to increase the numbers again.
Or increase the number of days, so yeah, but we hope it'll be wonderful. And our first year will be a country event both nights, so it'll be awesome. Do you guys have any questions for us?
Thank you.
I'm glad you're utilizing the lake. That's awesome.
What a great venue.
Yes.
I mean, that's, yeah, I just think it's huge. The whole area down there needs to be used a lot more. We'll see.
Thank you.
It's going to be great. Thank you all for coming.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you. Here are Cross's cards too. Thanks, guys.
Sorry we made you wait.
Hey, your pay. Good information. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Now we'll move on to personal appearances. Anybody from the audience wish?
Public comment.
Public comment. You know, I'm going to get...
It's all right. It's been a day.
Public comment. I'm going to get this right before the end of the week. As you start, please state your name and address. We don't have residency requirements. Five minutes to speak and an extension of time can be granted from the Commission. Questions directly to the Commission, follow the quorum, and please proceed.
I'm Gary Owen, 1655 Troon North here in Eldorado. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I attended the Prairie Trails Advisory Board meeting last Monday and became aware of an upcoming event, which causes me some concern. In November, the National Junior College Cross Country Meet will be held at the golf course. It's my understanding that, one, the course will be closed for a minimum of three to five days. I think quite honestly it'll be longer than that. Two, it's the responsibility of the golf course personnel to prepare the course. And by that I mean acquire the necessary supplies, stakes, rope, that type of thing. To rope off sensitive areas and keep runners and spectators off of those areas, as well as pick up items that might be misappropriated during the meet, such as tee markers, flag sticks, that type of thing. After the meet, the golf course personnel will obviously have to reverse that process and place those items back on the course, remove the ropes and that type of thing. Three porta-pots will be placed on the golf course by the meet committee. I'm guessing that'll be on the south and the west side of the course. That means a truck on the course to place them, which if somebody's not careful, could result in damage to the turf, with the expense of repairing that damage being the responsibility of the golf course, that is, the city. The meet organizers will gather the trash, but it'll be city responsibility to get it from the golf course someplace else. Five, parking is going to be at a premium, overflow either on the course or in the surrounding neighborhoods. And I live right next to the golf course, so that concerns me quite a bit. And then the most significant thing to me is the course receives no guaranteed compensation for this event and the city in general receives nothing other than the sales and bed tax generated by the visitors. My concern is that this arrangement deprives the local golfers of access to the course, causes potential physical damage to the golf course, places an additional financial burden on the golf course, and there is no corresponding compensation. So I come before you tonight to ask two questions. One, is my understanding correct? And two, if it is, can we negotiate a better deal for the city and the golf course?
Well, I guess my initial reaction is your understanding is correct in that there's a cross-country meet coming. Some of the other specific details, I guess I can't speak to directly. But I do know it's coming and we've been planning for it for nearly a year now. Is that...
Somewhere in that timeframe, correct.
I think your, the concerns are duly noted and I know that many of them were talked about when we were considering it some time ago. But I, at this point, can't speak directly to some of your specific points.
How do I go about getting answers to those?
I think we'll go ahead.
Okay, so you have two questions. One, how is the city being compensated for this meet?
Well, my first question is, do I understand this correctly? But, you know, the course, is the course in fact going to be closed for multiple days?
From what I know, and bear with me, I'm kind of getting a lot of this information today.
I understand.
And they're planning on three days for it being closed for practice sessions prior to the Saturday meet.
Okay. Can I, I'd like to have a conversation with you about this if possible, and I'm not trying to argue with you, but what we were told last Monday is that, by a superintendent, is that he plans to close the course on Tuesday because he'll have to spend Tuesday roping off areas he doesn't want anybody on, picking stuff up. And then Wednesday, they plan to mark the course. Thursday and Friday will be practice days and Saturday is the actual meet.
I'd be happy to meet with you, Mr. Owens, and talk about this and then even present to the community at the next...
At our next commission meeting, some of those details?
It's just so new and I think some of the items in here are developing as well, like who's going to be paid for the parking? Who receives those funds?
Is there going to be adequate parking?
I'm learning details, so...
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but folks, you know, we're less than a month away from this, no offense, but some of this, we should know some of this by now.
One, I think to your second, your second question is we have been contacted, all of us, I think, by golfers and having the concerns. And I think we've brought them to staff and we are looking into creating a better deal. And so we don't know what that'll be or if it will be, but I think that's our intention, to make it the best deal possible for everyone.
I know last year this meet was at Fort Dodge, Fort Dodge Country Club. Has anybody from the city contacted Fort Dodge to ask them, number one, what kind of agreement they had? And number two, what problems they had that we might want to try and...
I believe there's several golf courses that have been contacted, because I believe several golf courses host these meets.
But I'm under the impression that normally when something like this happens, there's some kind of fixed compensation agreed to upfront to cover a lot of this stuff. And it concerns me that based on what I heard last Monday night, we may get something back, we may not. We may get reimbursed for expenses, we may get reimbursed for damage.
Of course.
You know, we got a lot of money invested in that golf course, as I know the Commission knows, because they approved most of it.
And correct me if I'm wrong, motivation of this was to go out and be competitive and bid for this and bring up to 65 teams to our community to showcase Eldorado and have those overnight stays and that sales tax generation.
And I'm fully in support of that. I'm not, I'm not here to suggest to you that we shouldn't be doing this. I think this is a good thing. Anything, I've lived in this community since I was four years old and I'm really old now. Anything that benefits this community, I'm all for. I've also been playing golf on that golf course since I was 18 and that's 50 years ago. So I'm concerned that we, in the process of trying to showcase Eldorado, that we don't damage that golf course.
And I think you have a superintendent out there that's very prideful of that course and wants only the best for it. If I know Jason the way I know him, he's going to try to make sure that happens.
Mr. Owens, you posed a couple of very specific questions and I think we can try and get those answered for you. Scott had mentioned something about being able to connect with golf course staff and himself and you to get those resolved. Is that, is that something that we could do in the next few days?
Yes.
And then also bring back a presentation of what we can anticipate and display at next commission meetings?
I'd make myself available at your convenience, Scott, anytime.
I've got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I've got complaints on that, but I've also got complaints on this and I want to know if you've seen this out there. There are people complaining that they're using it as a dog park and people are out there walking around with their dogs right in the middle, golfers trying to golf.
Not just as a dog park, Commissioner, that's, as I say, I live on, I live on the golf course. Troon is right next to the golf course. I have my own golf cart. I can drive over. I love it. I can drive over to the course and play pretty much anytime I want to. Since I work in Wichita, most of my golf is played in the evening. And yes, you're absolutely right, in the evening, there are a number of people that use that as a dog park. There are people that use it as a place to fly their drone. I mean, we've been out there where we've had to actually drive golf carts down and make people get off the fairways so we could hit because they were out there with their drones. We had a major men's event there Friday, Saturday and Sunday this past weekend. Involved about 45 or 50 of us playing for three days. And we found neighborhood kids that had some kind of wheeled hovercraft or something. I don't know, I'm too old to recognize what it was. But we actually had to run them off the greens because they were up on the greens. So there are a number of people that live around there that think that's a park rather than a golf course and it is a problem.
It's dangerous.
Scott, do you need any contact information from me?
If you could give me a call in the morning, City Hall.
Be glad to.
Thank you.
Or ask Chuck. I'm just bothering him. He knows everything.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience wish to approach the Commission with public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to item two, which is a consent agenda, which has meaning minutes from our special meeting September 19, or Commission meeting September 19 or special meeting from September 14. Everybody's had a chance. It was in your packet to review those. Any questions or comments on the minutes or of the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. We'll move on to item three. Sales tax force for Parks and Recs master plan. Anybody wish to speak to that?
Mayor, Commission, at a work session with the Parks and Rec Board in August, you mentioned that you'd like to put together a sales tax task force to start work on possible sales tax to fund the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The Parks and Recreation Board agreed to serve on that board, or on that committee. And in past years, when you've had a task force, you've had up to 20 people on it. So we requested that you look for some individuals to serve and you're bringing those names to us this evening.
I have two names that have agreed to serve, Forrest Rhodes and Steve Seymour. Anybody else have names to add to this list?
I had two, but I just lost one. The one I have right now will be John Grunder with the Eldorado YMCA.
Okay.
I failed to secure it. I asked six people and got six turned down.
Well, I get a 50% on this assignment. I have one.
Together we have two, Ken, right?
Huh? I mean, I have another one that I'm still waiting for an answer, but the one who has agreed is Matt Guff.
He'd be a good one.
Okay. Do you have any, any names to offer to the committee?
Patrick Light would be like, like to be a part of it.
Okay.
That's all I have.
That's all you have? Well, Tabitha, we don't have a full committee yet. It's like, do we table this to our next week and extend the homework assignment? Extend the due date?
It's up to you. You can go ahead and appoint the youth or you can table it until you have a full committee.
Let's wait till we have a full committee. Thank you to those willing to serve and we'll be, be in touch.
And I would encourage anyone who has a strong interest in being a part of that to let us know.
Yeah, go on the city website and go to the Parks and Rec Department and in that is the Connect 2025. It shows the master plan for Parks and Rec and some of the things that are, that are being talked about. Welcome the public to do that and contact any one of the five of us if you're interested in being a part of it.
Can we put this on our own Facebook?
Absolutely. However you would like to do it.
Okay. Well, table on that, we'll push that to the next meeting, I guess, huh? Item number four, petition for the project number 506 widening of North Haverhill. This has been in the works for a while.
It has and Mayor and Commissioners, Valmont Industries has requested of the city to pave a portion of the shoulders adjacent to their property on North Haverhill Road. With, with the amount of truck traffic that goes in and out of Valmont and some of their onsite constraints with the size of their yard, at times trucks arrive and don't have the ability to pull right into their yard and have since parked on shoulder and it's created ruts and mud and been hard for the adjoining property owners to maintain. So Valmont is asking the City of Eldorado to pave these shoulders. They are willing to pay 100% of the cost and we're just asking you to consider passing a resolution night to move forward with the project.
Sounds like a good deal.
You can deny that. This has been an ongoing, ongoing issue. We'll find happy residents of the industrial park in general.
And I really would anticipate that work on this could start as soon as, within the next two weeks.
After Locust.
After Locust, yeah.
Resolution number, please.
2828.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Son, I would entertain a motion.
I move that resolution number 2828, a resolution determining the advisability in making certain internal improvements in the City of Eldorado, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, paving improvements, North Haverhill Road, project number 506.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further comments, discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Item six is City Manager's Report. Is there anything more to add?
I believe so.
Did you take out the executive search item?
We talked about it.
There was a motion in that item.
There was a motion in that?
I believe that you requested...
It wasn't here.
It should have been added into your package?
Well, I don't have one. I'll take mine back and add it.
I think they made mention of Waters and Company.
We did and we talked about a motion to go ahead and enter into that agreement. We did talk about that at our last meeting, but, or after those interviews.
We discussed that you wanted to have a motion to approve it and I don't know why that item is not in your package.
Okay. Or how about?
Yeah, I have it.
How about we wing it?
We can wing it. You just need to make a motion to select that company.
I move to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Waters and Company for the purpose of securing a new city.
Second.
It's been moved in double second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four. I abstain since I'm being appointed to that. Okay. Great. Well, we are certainly excited to get started with the search, so next chapter. All right, we have on our agenda in here executive session, which I had not intended to, to use, but some information has been brought to light today that I think the City Commission needs to be brought up to speed on. So I guess I would like to move into executive session with the purpose of discussing non-elected personnel and legal matters. Probably if you start with 20 minutes, would put us out at 7:40?
I move that we recess into an executive session for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to non-elected personnel and to reconvene the regularly scheduled meeting.
And legal matters.
To what?
And legal.
To what?
And legal.
And legal.
Legal matters.
To, to meeting in the city commission room at 7:40?
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We will retire our executive session until 7:40. Thank you.